I'm gonna get going, this is August first, it's one o'clock, a little bit later. Maintenance and development, and just to go over some issues and just different matters. I know that the public and some of my colleagues, you know, wanted to review. One of them being blight zoning issues. And I know not just our turnabouts, there's on St. James, there's other road construction. So I just kinda kept it bland, just as far as. Going into that, so I always. You know, even though it is my meaning, I always, always defer. I want to thank Ms. Roche Jackson. She's an activist in the community, well known. And, you know, a lot of times the public and different people come to us and I, you know, I like to hear. Let them also have an opportunity to speak some of their concerns, but. Be that that it may, I always, you know, turn, turn, turn the floor over to my colleagues first. Because it's always a pleasure to have them. I know Counselor Walsh, and thank you for being here too, Chris, thank you. Thank you. I don't want to miss you, you always are very responsive and I thank you for your work. So without I do Counselor Walsh, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Okay, well, thank you, Counselor Brown, for bringing up these issues, you know, Chris, you know. That it's important that we're able to answer questions from our constituents about what's going around, what's happening in a lot of these different. Areas and we're all impacted by, by traffic and changes and of course blight is something that impacts the entire, entire city. So I, you know, people always want to know what is happening and what to prepare for. So I'm sure you can give us some, some good insight. And again, obviously Sumner Avenue being the main, major artery it is, when that is. Starting because just the changes they've been doing for the utilities, they've been so disruptive. So, and that's just a small part of it, right?
That's why I'm laughing, it's like, yeah, it's gonna be, where we are on that project, I'm sorry Counselor, I don't, I don't want to go off on a tangent. You want me to talk about the X first?
Well, you know, go through the chair.
Sure.
Whatever hit, you know.
Yeah, fine.
First.
Time now, the X project, we are in the process right now of finishing. All of the title work takings and easements associated with the project. Our goal is that those will be coming in front of the city council. I think it's September sixteenth. I think it's September sixteenth, and at the same time, that project is gonna be going out to bid. By the state. And the idea is, is that the major construction will start next spring, when they have a contractor. Now, in the bid package that we put together, we put together a proposed sequencing plan of how the contractor should attack the project. The contractor can submit a, cause it will be, it'll go through the state, state runs the construction. The contractor may submit a modified phasing plan. And once we get that, if it's approved, we then can, I can then present that to the public. Knowing full well that that's what's gonna be followed, basically, you know, we're gonna be doing A before B before C before D. So once I have that from the contractor, I can do that. You know, one of the ones that Mallow had asked about was St. James and Tapley. And the contractor on that project actually did a modified plan. Which we then ended up posting on websites and posting on our Facebook page and everything, from a disruption standpoint. And most of these contractors are trying to get things done a lot quicker than what the state is kinda pushing them for. So when we get that information, we primarily try to push it out through our Facebook page and our website. And at the same time, I contact Mayor's Office of Communication through Bill Baker and Molly, so that they can get it posted as well. And depending upon where we are in the city with that, for example, the stuff that was at. Tapley and St. James, it's like I got it out to the Bay neighborhood, got it out to the Hungry Hill neighborhood, got it up to the Springfield neighborhood. So they could share it with their people as well, just from a disruption standpoint. And, you know, we've been doing that with the St. James, St. James Carew as well, and we'll definitely be doing that with the X. Assuming it'll be Beatty who will be dealing with on that, so that she can get it out. Through the neighborhood group as well, and at the same time, we'll be posting for construction. There are probably two or three or four other big state projects. That we, as, usually what happens in the city when we're doing a roadway project. We design it, state builds it, but there's a lot going on now in the city that the state is designing. And not to say we don't have any input, but we have less input. And the project that is probably gonna be more, I mean, the X is gonna be disruptive simply because of. The amount of cars that go through there, but the other one that we're trying to get a date on that I don't have is actually two. Bridges on Albany, or excuse me, on Armory Street, one on each side of where Albany comes into Armory that are gonna be replaced. I don't have a schedule on that, I think it's supposed to be next year. But I have not seen the updated schedule on that. From Mass DOT, they lost a bunch of project managers, so I don't think they have a project manager associated with that. That's gonna be one that will happen. And then two, three, four, five years out, there's a number of other projects. And one notification that we have yesterday, there is going to be a brand new North End Bridge. That, that won't start construction until 2028, late 27, early 28. But we're just starting on the scoping on that with Mass DOT, we were just notified about that a couple days ago, as a matter of fact. So there is a whole host of construction as well as our paving program, which is starting up now. That I'm gonna be posting a schedule probably tomorrow. Of what's gonna be going on over the next month, month and a half, what streets will be on and things like that, so. And the. Other item, the crosswalk at the library. If you've been down there, they are building a new parking lot adjacent to the library between that and St. Michael's. As soon as that is complete, which should be in the next week, 10 days, two weeks. Then all the. Workers from the library can park there, they don't have to park across the street. Then when that parking lot is open, we're gonna move over and start building the stuff in State Street. So that'll be, you know, that'll be a couple, you know, like I said, a couple weeks away, actual work in State Street. I went down there today, they're actually working in State Street, but they're doing drainage work. So in the next couple of weeks, all that work will be starting. So I don't think there's any other project that I missed, that you're interested in, happy to fill you in on. Also working with Water and Sewer, they're doing all that, all the stuff that's all ripped up down in the South End on Main Street. They're getting close on that, that whole area is gonna get repaved when they're done. So that should be occurring in the, in the next few months as well. On that through them, but that's part of their project that they're working on. New lines there and then over at the. New treatment, no, excuse me, the new pump station over at the old York Street Jail site. So they're working out there, and if you drive by there, you can see some of the massive equipment that they're putting in, you know. Water mains that are 48 inches and, you know, sewer pipes that are 72 inches and stuff. So this is huge equipment that they're putting in there. So I don't know if there's any other project that you had an interest in that I might have forgotten about, but. You know, this year, between us, Water and Sewer and Gas Company, there is a lot of, a lot of construction going on.
Through the chair, Chris, the entrance to that new parking lot is on, next to St. Michael's, is that gonna be off State Street?
Yeah, it's, there's, there was an existing driveway there that went along the side of the building. And in the back, they had a parking lot for a bunch of their service vehicles. And that was the main area where they used to do big deliveries for the facility. So the existing entrance is gonna stay and be used. And if you drive by there now, you can see the area that's cleared where, basically when you drive up that access road now, there's gonna be all nose-in parking. On one side of it, then the back, there's gonna be a little bit of a bigger parking area for them. And it's funny because one of the first things I ever did with the city back in 2010. Was to lay out for a parking lot area, we couldn't get a, an agreement with the diocese. And so right now, the. Redevelopment Authority through the Library Museum Association has reached an agreement on a lease for that property. So they're involved with that, so they approved the plan, I dealt with Jack Dillon.
You got their blessing?
Got their blessing, dealt with their board, and obviously the people at the library are ecstatic about that as well, so. Yeah, we dealt with the diocese, the other project that, I'm sorry, there is one other that will be starting construction soon, will be Dwight Street. From roughly Worthington-ish to State Street is gonna get redone, and that was part of a grant. From the Gaming Commission. And at the same time, we're trying to work with the state on getting all their stuff done around the Civic Center Garage. As well, so that, that construction for Dwight is gonna be starting, and that's gonna be, you know, some, some bump outs at intersections, obviously new curving, a lot of new trees. And that road right now is three lanes wide, and it's gonna be modified, it's only gonna be two. It doesn't need to be three through there, kinda creates a lot of speedway through there. So, you know, turning lanes at the intersection, no new lights or anything like that, so. That one will be starting, starting as well, we, the contractor just got a notice to proceed, so I would anticipate the next. Two, three, four weeks, he'll start digging out there as well. And I can't think of anything else major. That is going on from a develop, from a design perspective, development. I do know that we are in the process of reviewing all the plans. For everything that's gonna happen at the Eastfield Mall. So that, some people have asked me about that, that is moving forward. We're actually going through the design plans from a civil perspective, you know, drainage, traffic. Building locations, all that good stuff, and I know all those plans are in, I believe with the building department as well. So I know a lot of people have been asking about the status of that, so that's gonna be underway, you know, in the next few months as well.
Thank you.
What did I miss, Mallow?
I got a, I got a few more for you.
Okay.
I'd like to also recognize Mike, I see he joined. Ms. Roche, I'd like, I, I wanna open the floor up to you for a second, I know a lot of people had concerns with. With that turnaround that, over there on St. James. I know when we talked, we talked about having, I know people said they, the design was designed a little different and how it's being put up differently. But I'll, I'll let, I'll yield to Ms. Roche.
Okay, hello everyone, I just wanted to say a little bit about it, I think that it started out as just a regular way, but now it's a roundabout. So I just wanted to ask some questions in regards to that and how that would be in terms of the flow of traffic and everything else. Cause I was under the impression that it was going to be, you know, the basic flow of like a island and versus the roundabout.
Yep. And the way that the project started out, that was a state project. And when it started out, the original design was basically just a redesign of the intersection the way that it was. And one of the requirements of projects that's been going on for X amount of years. Is you lay out, you know, four or five different options for, especially on an intersection, but along a roadway as well. And you look at all different options, and one of the options becomes long-term maintenance, long-term this, long-term that. And from the state level, we actually had a public hearing, presented it. A number of people from the city came back and were concerned about pedestrian movements, was concerned about turning movements. I wasn't happy with the design because one of the, it's right outside our office, and one of the complaints I had. Was when I come to Tapley Street and want to take a left to go south on St. James, there was no phase for that and in the other direction. So we were asking about all these changes and lane modifications. And the intersection was just growing, it was big, but it was growing. We were gonna be taking property from basically all three sides, cause one side is the highway, we're gonna be taking a lot of property. And in one case, the, there's like a little. Like repair shop on the corner where the bridge is at Tapley Street. And we were basically gonna have to take his entire property, we were gonna take a little bit, but it was gonna destroy his property. And we also were gonna have a major impact at the gas station, and we didn't want that. So the state came back and said, well, we think a roundabout would work better. And I, I am, I was skeptical, skeptical, and I still am a little skeptical. Simply because of the amount of truck traffic that goes through there. Number one, from all my trucks, and number two, from everything that is just in the general area that's going to Albany Ave and things like that as well. So. They came back with the design of the roundabout, and we had two other public hearings on that. I think one was in late 21 and one was early 22, or one was early 21, late 21. I can't remember the dates on it. And obviously the construction started last fall. And if you've driven out there in the last week, it is now a roundabout. And it's actually, and there's, there's not a lot of signs. The signs are starting to be put up and they're building the approach islands in the center. And traffic is flowing around it, I think, pretty well. Once the center island gets built. That area is, is able to be used by trucks when they're, when they're going through as well. So, you know, it's a little narrow out there now, but it seems to be operating pretty well. So we're monitoring it as we go along, but they will probably be done with all that construction. I'm gonna guess probably around October 1st. They got work to do on the other side of 291. Where the ramp comes off of 291 and the intersection there in the ramp that gets onto 291. But the intersection itself, that is now a roundabout, you know, will probably be completely done in the next couple months. There are traffic signals out there now because they were temporary. Once all the signage gets up, those temporary traffic signals will come down. Because they, where the existing poles were, they needed to put temporary ones out farther so they could build a roundabout. So there was just, those are out there just blinking now. And, you know, I'm knocking on wood because traffic seems to be flowing pretty well. When I always look out my window here during peak hours, I can see. Traffic backing up and right now. It's, when it was a traffic signal a couple of weeks ago, it was really backing up because they narrowed the lanes. It used to be three at that intersection to one. Now it's one and everything seems to be flowing, at least here. And I'm not gonna say I haven't gotten complaints, most of the complaints are construction related. You know, gotta get, gotta get some of the barrels out of there and, you know, some people just aren't used to driving through a roundabout. So once we can get people kinda behaving, I'm, I'm thinking it's gonna operate pretty well. I was skeptical, I was very, very skeptical, and still am, but I, you know, but asking our trucks and everything in there, like we're having. No problems whatsoever, the big problem out there now is basically construction. And making sure the cops are paying attention to certain vehicles going through there. You know, in case there's a, in case there's a need for something that's a little wider, based upon the construction that's going on now.
Yeah, I, I'm in agreement with that as well, and I think that it'll probably slow up as far as people driving fast as well, so. You know, with the roundabout, it's gonna probably change some things, so people will be not flying through the, you know, Tapley Street and those surrounding areas. So I think that'll make a difference, so, yes, yes. Just don't want them to have a car come over in your all's department, the DPW, that'll be really something, you know.
And every so often at the Six Corners Roundabout, somebody not paying attention, usually a little, in Italian, we call it umbriad. But, you know, drives through the middle of it because they're really not paying attention, you know, things like that do happen. But there is always a massive reduction for roundabouts. Not necessarily in the amount of accidents, there is a reduction, but the severity becomes very, very, very reduced. Of people, you know, plowing, you know, nobody's gonna plow through that intersection going 50 miles an hour.
Right, exactly.
They're not gonna be able to. Yeah.
They can't now.
You know, and people trying to turn into it, so, you know, there, there will be accidents all the, I, I don't wanna say all the time, but there will be accidents. But, you know, you get into rear ends, you get into a little bit of sideswiping, much, much, much less severe. And that gets into the calculation with the state level of accidents and long-term analysis from a financial standpoint as well.
I see, thank you so much, thank you for that.
And Chris, just stay right there, I, I definitely thank you for your work. In that particular area, around 4:30. When you guys get, you guys might not be there. But around like 4:30, when the schools are letting out and there's jobs coming out, it's such a backup traffic over there.
It's actually right now, better with the roundabout working than it was, I'm gonna say, three weeks ago with the traffic signals. Because we had reduced the lanes so much, and the light cycles were basically running. You know, they, they used to run before, you know, you could go up and down St. James and you could go up and down Tapley. They had to modify it because there wasn't enough room, so it was basically one side of Tapley, the other side of Tapley, one side of St. James, the other side of St. James. So you were, you were dealing with a huge traffic cycle that was backing traffic up.
And Chris, where, where, where it bothers me is that they wanted, we were supposed to have like a two lane. They figured out it wasn't gonna be enough room over there. When we're talking about where Counselor Walsh's area, when we're doing construction over there, the same thing might be able to happen, correct?
Uh, yeah, and, and the, the roundabout here is basically gonna be one lane. Except for a couple legs of it that are gonna have two, based upon the, the turning movements. But the issue, like I said, the issue that was happening a few weeks back was. For example, when you're on Tapley here and you were going in front of our building to go to the intersection. Excuse me, when you got to the intersection, there were three lanes, you could go straight, right or left. For the last month, when you came there, it was only one lane. And you didn't have enough clearance, so that was really backing traffic up, and it was the same in all directions. And I've been kinda looking at it, it's better. But where there is gonna be two lanes right now is only one, because they're working on the island, so I anticipate that those will be. That those will be better, and yeah, we're definitely gonna be monitoring it. As well from a traffic perspective, because people are gonna have to learn how to use it.
And, and where I say, and I, I know it's really not much, it's not something that's your fault, but. When the state and they have these certain designs and they're presented to the community. The community feels once they leave that that's set in stone. Not knowing that different phases might occur and it might change. It might go from the complete different thing that you actually sat down and went through with everyone. So that kinda is something that I kinda worry about. You know, because just like in this case, some people think, oh, we're gonna have two lanes, we're gonna have this, we're gonna have that. And then once it's constructed, it looks completely different.
And, and, and really, the design that was presented at the final public hearing is what's being built out there. On that, and you know, one of the problems that I do have with the state is. Sometimes their engineering discussions are way, way up here. And, you know, doesn't get a lot of. Common person language sometimes. So what we hope to do is at least be able to talk to people, and one of the things, and I see my good friend Betsy is here. Hi Bets. When we had that first hearing, you know, like her group, her walk bike group and a few others, were. A lot of the groups instrumental in making a lot of the changes there. And looking at extending the project a little, and when I say extending the project. Like to the other side of Route 291 on Tapley for pedestrians. And just as an aside, the state is also gonna be replacing that bridge. And they're gonna be replacing the bridge over 291 on St. James. That's probably three years out right now, and at the same time, they're gonna be replacing the dry bridge. Kind of like where Albany Ave is on St. James as well, and we got a status meeting on that, I think it's next week. As well, but the, all of those, you know, having to add in all the bike lanes have, cause that's one of the problems now when we start looking at these layouts. Adding in buffers and bike lanes and separation and lane widths. We just start, the roads just start to grow way, 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 way too much, and we had the same issue at the X. Where, you know, the state says it's gotta be this way, and in order to do that, we had to cut down 200 trees. So we then had to modify the design, get the state to approve it and review it and all that good stuff. We kinda did the same thing on this project as well, it kinda went back to a little bit of square one on the roundabout side. So that we could get some better, a better flow and then. A little bit better layout from a pedestrian and bike standpoint as well, cause all those lanes are in there on these projects.
Thank you, Chris, and I, I wanna acknowledge Liz, Elizabeth, thank you for being here.
Sorry, I'm in the, I'm in a car, I'm just been experimenting with all the new bike lanes in Cambridge. So I can tell you what works and doesn't work as somebody who spent many years riding here without things. But I, I think we're real excited to, what we're actually talking with Andy Carr about is the fact that we've got the project at St. James. Boulevard, St. Ja, you know, St. James Ave and Carew, and then we've got this project. And the fact that we've gotta figure out how we get that little bit of straightaway in between now striped consistently. In a consistent pattern between what's happening at these two intersections. So I think Chris knows about this, and I think, you know, Andy, Andy had said, yes, that, we're gonna, that, you're right. We, we gotta figure out some funds that we can just, that's a striping job.
Yeah, that's part of our, that'd be part of our.
That we just do, because it will be kinda weird to have. It nicely narrowed down at each intersection, then in all of a sudden. It's crazy land all over again.
Right, and, and Chris. Why, I wanna go and get into, I'm not, the other issue was zoning issues as far as, there were certain, there's certain areas, certain people. Especially over where I'm at, who have, they have, they have zoning permits to do certain things and streets weren't even in existence back then. Like where they're at, so they might be zoned to be a certain type of business. And that, it might have been zoned for that maybe like 50, 60 years ago. What happens when things like that happen and then like another, cause there's entities over there that, different entities I know, and people are complaint, keep complaining about that stuff.
And I know, I, Mike can follow this up, and I know that. And, and I'm not the zoning expert by any stretch of the imagination, but. In certain residential zoning. Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, you can also have business. In there, cause I know we were looking at it, where it came up was in Indian Orchard. Pasco Road. Page Boulevard, kind of across from the old, old, old Grossman's with Rick's Autobody now. The neighborhood in there, you know, it's all residential, however, sprinkled in are all these little businesses, you know, manufacturing and things like that. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, those were allowed in residential A at a point? You're still muted.
Yeah, but from what I hear, it had something to do where they used to do it along, it was something they allowed a long time ago, and it's there now.
Right. And that's what I, that's where I was going with it, because up in the orchard, in those areas, like you have three residential properties in a row. Then you have like a, you know, a machine, a machinist. And obviously, you know, the neighbors don't like it, you know, because they got a business, but I think it was, it was allowed in residence A, Mike?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, perfect, I was on mute, sorry about that, apologize. If I had some addresses, I can actually get you the actual addresses and, but theoretically, if you had a business and it's operating on a residential, much like we have some convenience stores. That are in residential and you can't do that anymore. Under the zoning ordinance, as long as the use never changed and the use maintains, you can continue that use. So there are some instances where businesses are sort of grandfathered in, you obviously couldn't do some of that stuff today. But without looking at the history, I can't tell you exactly whether they're legal or not, but if I had addresses, I could actually look at the addresses and. See if they had permits to actually do what they're doing over there. But if I had addresses, I could actually look at the addresses and see if they had permits to actually do what they're doing over there. Um but there are instances where you get certain businesses that are in residential that are what we'd say grandfathered in or we'd say today nonconforming.
And and uh uh Counselor Brown, you probably weren't on the council that I know Caterie was. Uh Caterie, I I don't know if you remember, there was that section in Indian Orchard that uh Counselor Ramos at the time was trying to get a zone change there to get the businesses out.
Yep.
And you know, because they were grandfathered in, uh it was a little bit of an issue uh on that because one of them was a construction company that was barely operating and then all of a sudden they blossomed and you know, now all of a sudden you got fifty trucks and all that stuff there. So yeah, things, things like that, Counselor Brown, I would say between, you know, probably Phil, Mike, myself, others, if there's a specific location. You know, uh you would wanna make sure that we could double check to make sure that it's not uh, you know, somebody's not in violation of something.
No, it's it's kind of uh like I I I I know that it's an issue. I'm not personally gonna go and I know there's more than that many.
Yeah.
So I'm not gonna go and personally, I was hoping that maybe you guys can find out which ones. I mean, this is this is something that's been going been going on for a while. Um I just hope that the city at some point would address it. Um I I it's not my department. I've just.
Are you talking about a specific area, a specific street?
Springfield, Mass.
Yeah.
There you go.
I mean, by example, you have that um auto place right next to Hubbard Park. They're they're a construction company there. That whole property is Residence B. They've been selling cars there for I don't know how many years and then the building was shot. Um they went for a special permit to um reopen the uh car lot and then rebuild the thing, but that whole property is Residence B. You couldn't do that today in Residence B.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Um but generally speaking throughout the city, there's so many of them. Yeah, I mean, I it's it's kind of tough to just speak broadly other than some are grandfathered in.
Well, I but I you know, I I I believe that it is an issue. It should be something that we should address um and get in order, just not leave it and let it just keep festering. Um I would just, you know, I mean, cuz there 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 there's different businesses, new businesses and and things out there where we can't keep develop, where we're just at a stagnant place with um old old rules and policy that's been in place that's are that are outdated. And not only are they not uh not only are they outdated, they're truly probably not legal, but only legal because it was legal a long time ago. So I really would uh emphasize that the city um as a whole, we figure that out and try to try to rem- remedy that is.
A lot of that is derived from mass general laws. So it's not just changing the zoning ordinance. You're not gonna change in mass general laws.
Yeah, but even whatever we might have to do, whatever we might have to do, um it's something that's been there and it's festering. Um.
Uh through the chair, I have a question. So, Mike, nice to see you. So so a situation like this where there's a business and if the use stays the same, it can continue. What happens if there's a change of ownership? Does that impact their grandfather status?
No, it's 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 the actual um the use itself. The use itself can substantially change from the previous nonconforming use. So it has to be very similar or at least determined to be very similar by the building commissioner or myself and Phil or something along those lines. But the change of an ownership to operate the same sort of business isn't gonna do it. The only other thing that could happen is if those places are abandoned or not used for a period of two more year, two or more years. It's not supposed to reopen without a special permit from city council.
Oh, okay. That's good to know. But and some of these, I mean, to be fair, probably some of the some of the residents uh appreciate that some of the businesses that are there.
I'm sure they do i- in some regards, and I'm sure some don't appreciate some of the other businesses as well. You're never gonna keep everybody happy.
You would know that.
And uh and 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 um Chris, about the that school, that uh that uh that hospital over there. That blighted spot over there in my area.
Fourteen hundred State.
The the one uh the the old Vibra?
Yeah.
Fourteen hundred State Street.
Yep.
What can we do when we have absent landlords and things like that? Cuz we have that stuff throughout the uh city. Where a lot of uh a lot of a lot of landlords who are actively present are getting fines and citations and people who aren't from here, they're 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 able to just run freely and uh bring blight around our uh city.
Yeah.
Um how how many people do we have uh working on this stuff?
For as blight goes?
Yeah. Why did why was it able to get that way? Why is there able to have a lot of these blighted uh properties not manicured? How does that?
Getting back to State Street first, I'll start there. That one actually is in court. We did write it up and it's actually been forwarded to court. I I was out last week, but I believe our attorneys probably had a hearing with their attorneys from that fourteen hundred State Street property. So I know they did clean it up. They're awarding insecure in it. So in order for it to be be blight, it has to be at least vacant number one, and then it has to be becoming dilapidated as documented by the Code of important Darton or attracting illegal activity as it uh determined by the police department. And um or it's a fire hazard determined by the fire marshal and or it's, you know, basically um becoming dilapidated. Um so they just being vacant isn't enough. It has to be um one of those A, B, C, and D um areas there. But I did put up the numbers and I went back at least uh since uh two thousand twenty one to today. And it we had like uh two hundred and three closed cases since two thousand twenty one. And we have right now eighty open cases. And this is citywide. Do we have them all? Probably not all every single one of them. But you know, I I'd like to think that in, you know, the four or five years, the four years there um closing two hundred and three cases of blight is meaning somebody got in there, they did a rehab and somebody's occupied it at this point. So when you only have two people trying to cover the whole city.
Yeah.
It's hard to get everything.
Yeah, because that and 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 just even when it comes to landlords, not at such a huge um uh capacity, I'm just talking about a person who might own a home. And they don't live here and their area is now ran down and it's it's blighted. What do we? Well, I mean, that's I I can go down the north and south and I go throughout the city up where four, fives everywhere. There's places like that. Um what why what are we doing as far as those that stuff?
Well, we try to catch up. We try to keep up with it. Um again, when you now I'm down to one inspector. So I essentially got one guy trying to cover the whole city until I could get.
I would I would I would tell you to like in my area, for instance, maybe they should. My area looks pretty well. So I have business owners who just got written up talking about um some gravel and a doggone on the on the on their pavement. And they were gonna get fined by you guys. And I went and I drove around in your area and your driveway looked worse than their driveway. And I'm just wondering, they're right around the corner. I mean, so do you guys only deal with people in Ward four? Or do you go to seven? Do you go to other areas?
Again, we try to cover the whole city. We sort of go by complaints, but there can be some proactive stuff where you happen to be somewhere and you see something. Yes, you you could write that up as well.
Yeah, because even that actual in particular situation, whoever was out, whoever you had out there doing that, they had more than ample enough time cuz they've been over in the area of five times almost. And I know there's blighted area. I'm wondering like, I mean, you're you're harassing.
By a lot of places, I don't necessarily see everything. If I actually have to stop there, I might see more.
Mike, hold on. But these particular people were hard earning business workers who were being harassed. So they were they're usually there, they're there and they clean the spot. There are people.
Would you say harassed?
Yeah, I I I I'll get to you. I'll get to it later. I'll show you afterwards. It's not this is I'll show you what I mean afterward. Um.
And can I ask through the chair, um Mike, you said that there's only two of you. Are there unfilled positions that you're waiting to have filled?
Yes, um so I'm down at one inspector um trying to cover the whole city right now.
Is it are they already in the part of the budget and you're just waiting to fill it?
Yes, I just had someone recently leave, went to Connecticut for twenty thousand dollars more.
Oh, okay. Well.
Chris.
Yeah.
Chris, that's something things you gotta work on too, brother. No, I'm telling you, a lot of with attrition, we gotta be able to get more money to some of these guys so they're not leaving us. You need to get Mike some more money. Y'all gotta get some more money.
I'm not giving Mike anything.
Oh, come on. The building inspector's got it. Yeah, but you're. There's other folks thinking of leaving too.
I I don't know about Mike's side. We just uh I think at your next council meeting, let me put it this way, it better be at the next council meeting. Uh both our Ask Me and UFCW contracts have been completed that I think have a pretty good bump for the employees, number one.
Mike some more money?
Yeah, well, I Mike and Mike can fight for his own, but I I I know we your guys, your guys, Mike are mostly. Mike, are your guys mostly up C?
The ins- the inspectors and I I believe the secretaries are as well.
Okay, yeah, cuz my guys are UFCW and Ask Me. I have uh just a couple of uh up C members.
The building inspectors have their own union, which is a very small.
So that's that's a different story. So I know on our side uh we got that, but I am still I am still fighting the good fight. Uh pay was my was was a big problem and I'm still trying to fight the good fight on the residency side. Uh because that's one of the other problems that we are dealing with at this point. Cuz the problem that I'm seeing just citywide is I mean, you know, we would apply some, you know, whether they were residents or not. You know, in a particular position, you might get ten or fifteen people. I'm getting one, two, you know, and it's always and Mike knows it's from another department. I just stole somebody from him.
Yeah.
You know, I'm gonna say the last three hires I've done have come from existing city departments.
But why why is this so hard to pay?
Well, I like I like people to be promoted from within. I think that's an incentive itself. There should be more of it.
It's it's a it's a good thing. Uh I think it's a very good thing cuz you have people who are knowledgeable of the city, knowledgeable of uh practice, and it does allow them to get money to go up. Uh but you know, at a certain point, you gotta backfill that with somebody from the outside, whether it's Mike's department or he ends up stealing somebody from the clerk's office or from nine one or three one one or something like that. And sooner or later, it's 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 people, there's just not the numbers just aren't applying. I and I I wish I knew where all these people were. Uh you know, I got issues like with.
I think that's a trend in the whole country.
Yeah, it's it's not unique to the city of Springfield at all.
Yeah.
It's not unique, but that is, uh you know, I'm I'm a little bit more comfortable now.
You guys have, you probably don't have any work from home.
Uh zero. No, we don't. We're not doing anything from home.
That's 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 what people wanna do. They wanna work.
Well, that's and and I've talked to it. I and I've had conversations with some young people. Uh you know, my son's age is in an early thirties and that's what they expect the rest of their life to be. He's getting up in the morning and sitting at home and, you know, uh kind of coming and going as they please and uh you know, I'm a uh old fuddy duddy when it comes to, you know, you need to come to work. I need to see that you're working. I need to make sure you're following up on stuff. And uh so we are one hundred percent in work, no remote, no nothing.
But Chris, what is there something we can do to kind of uh cuz this is something that every department, is there something we can do? Maybe we deal with each department like uh 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 as we go to get people more funding? Is there something even as a council body that we might be able to do? Uh with mayors, is there cuz because it 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 really is something that's always gonna occur. They're all we do not pay our employees enough. And 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 they'd be crazy to sit sit at a job where they can go somewhere and make more money.
Yep.
If I didn't have twenty five years with the city, forget my inspector, I would have took that down.
But it's in and that's uh what's happening now, whether it's mostly private that I'm seeing, private has a lot more flexibility. Uh you know, so people I, you know, I lost construction guys to go to a contractor and you know, then all of a sudden they figure out, hey, what do you mean I'm getting laid off for the winter? Well, that's what contractors do. You know, and it's like I had one guy leave, a week later he comes back. Uh and a couple people leave, but the uh the issue uh on that uh Counselor Brown in in simplistic terms, when the contracts, uh you know, like I said, the contracts will be coming in front of the council. Uh and you know, uh some of the stuff I'm happy with, some of the stuff I'm not so happy with. Um cuz I think some of the stuff we make just way, way, way too complicated within the city, not just, hey, we're paying you X. You know, it's things like, you know, vacation and sick time and how stuff like that gets calculated versus one. You know, the employees who were started here in nineteen ninety versus the employees that started twenty twenty two and you know, there's different calculations, just trying to figure out how much vacation time somebody gets where it just gets a little too complicated with uh with some of these. But like I said, I as far as I know from uh my talk this morning with Bill Mahoney, I think they're gonna be in front of the council August nineteenth.
Well, I guess a good question, Mallow.
That was the hearings night.
It is. I think he's trying to get it on depending upon what the uh agenda looks like.
Go ahead, Mike.
I I'm saying it is why is certain non people bargaining, non bargaining folks getting raises more periodically than others are? And also creates another issue. Not only is it, I know I ain't get paid enough, but why do other folks keep getting more money and I don't?
How do you fix that?
Trust me, it's not just.
Yeah, the and and I understand that you're not the only one who said something to me, Mike. And that's kind of like even why I'm asking cuz I know a lot of times, even with Chris, it's kind of difficult when you're budgeting and there's certain lump sums and all that. I know there's certain unions. I know there's, is there a reason why that happens? Chris?
If if you're talking non bargaining, basically as a department head in my division, I've got a hundred and forty people. I have thirteen, I think, non bargaining. If I wanna do a non bargaining, I have to, I approach the CFO, I approach the mayor. Uh I go through with it. I have to do an analysis. Uh and my analysis should not just be, hey, Mallow's a good guy, give him money. Uh it should be, hey, Mallow's a good guy, does a great job, he deserves X. And in comparison to what this person does at this other department, the same thing, they should be making about the same. But even more important is hey, I wanna make this employee, I wanna give him a twenty grand raise that's gonna turn into fifty other people showing up at the mayor's office going, wait a minute. You know, you know, kind of the way Mike was just talking. So you know, you try to you try to balance it.
There is a discrepancy though, Chris.
And that's the whole thing is you try to balance it and and each one of them becomes difficult and it takes its own life through through the mayor's office, through the CFO, through the uh Personnel Review Committee. And you know, I've been looking at some stuff for my employees and I've been dealing with it for probably seven months right now. Uh I hopefully I'm getting to the to the finish line. Uh but you know, jokingly, we kind of say, hey, if person X gets a giant raise, hey, that's good for me. I now have somebody to compare myself to. Uh but you know, we we also don't wanna create uh animosity or angst between divisions and departments as well because you know, we're all, you know, we all, I I think I'm the most important department in the city. You know, but it's like between all of us, you know, we gotta I can't do my job without Mike. Mike can't do his job without me sometimes and police and fire and building and code and all that good stuff. So you know, we are a a big giant team sometimes, but you know, that the the whole pay thing does get a little wonky sometimes. But the union side, I I know from our side, I'm I'm relatively happy. They're getting a uh a pretty good initial bump uh moving forward and they just they ratified uh both unions ratified this week, so.
You guys got you guys got one side over there who always get raises and another side who don't ever get raises.
I'm not even gonna comment on that.
You ready to kill me? Don't kill me, Chris. Don't kill me.
I mean, I've been with the city twenty five years. So I mean, I don't know. You'd think you get something.
Okay, Mike, something. Cut it out, Chris. Go ahead, Counselor Walsh. Did you have?
No, no, I'm.
Did you have anything, Ms. Rochelle?
All set. No, Counselor Brown, I'm all set.
I think I see. Is that uh Counselor Allen? Are you? I don't know if he he might have a question or anything.
I already talked to him today. He lost his chance.
There you go. But um I just uh once again, uh I wanna thank everyone for coming. I think there's a lot of different uh things. This was a good meeting, a lot of different things that you know, we did address, but there's things we still need on the table, I think uh uh with some of the zoning stuff, but you you I mean, we're asking a lot from the city. But you, you, I mean, we're asking a lot from the city and you know, I know we're asking a lot from you, Chris, we're asking a lot from you, Mike. Um, it's like we're almost tying each other's hands um from being able to uh, you know, let's work easier. You know, it's just, yeah, not just hard, it just doesn't make sense.
I'm with that.
You know, and, 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 and it, and it does us a disservice when we don't appreciate each other by, 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 by a- adjusting for inflation. You know, because for some reason, even in Massachusetts, when we're out in the state house, they say we're like nickel-dime people, we don't ask for enough money. We don't, we don't, you know, they like, we have to get more money, we have to get more financing in. Um, so I know Chris, I know Chris, he has a, a he- heck of a job when it comes to the money and fighting for the money. And I, you know, I commend you for the work that you do.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, appreciate all you guys do, I'm gonna.
Appreciate you guys. Um, thank you, Ms. Rochelle for being here. Um, we're gonna end this, so if Counselor Walsh, if you have anything, you can.
No, we'll do some follow-up, good meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and from my side, anything specific, any one of you have, just drop me an email. And I know I'm working with uh Steve and some other people on the Vibra thing as well. And I've had conversation with the owner to get that place secured.
So happy with, that there's actually gonna be, finally gonna be an ac- answer to that terrible issue on State Street near the library. And that's a, that's a big, big deal.
Yeah.
Yeah, pleased about that. Bye, everybody, have a good.
Thank you.